How's it going, Officer Furuley Rochelle Park?
Hey, what's up, man? How are you?
You have the insurance? Everything alright tonight, man?
Yeah, man, just heading home.
Yeah, from where?
Uh, from my friend's house.
Where's that at?
Uh, Elmwood Park.
Alright. So, we're here to shut the car off real quick.
Shut it off?
Yeah, shut the car off. Can you hop on out?
Hop on out?
Yep. Just gonna stay on the sidewalk, so we can talk. Where are you coming from tonight, sir?
Uh, just my friend's house.
Okay, where's your friend?
Elmwood Park. Elmwood Park.
Elmwood Park?
Yeah.
What time did you leave your friend's house?
Excuse me?
What time did you leave your friend's house?
Thirty minutes ago.
Thirty minutes ago?
Yeah.
What'd you do while you were there?
Just hang out.
Hang out?
Yeah.
Tired?
I mean, yeah, three in the morning, yeah.
Did you fall asleep at the light?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, someone said that you were sitting there for a little bit?
Nah, it was the light.
Do you have anything to drink while you're at your friend's house?
No.
Nothing to drink?
No.
So, we just wanna make sure you're okay to drive, more than anything else?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I literally live down the block.
Where do you live? Is your house for sale?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I saw it recently.
I'm buying a new one on...
Here's what we'll do. This is, uh, pretty even right here. Whatever you do, just put your feet together and just keep your hands down at your side. Alright, I see you're wearing glasses. Do you have astigmatism, or...?
I do have astigmatism.
You do have astigmatism?
Yeah.
Okay.
You wanna take them off?
Yeah, can you take them off?
Yeah.
That's what I want you to do, with your eyes and your eyes only. Just follow the tip of my finger. Is that right? Do not move your head. Follow the tip of my finger with your eyes, and your eyes only.
So, the flashlight is like in my face, so...
Continue to follow the tip of my finger. There, back. Kill your front lights. Now, kill your front lights. Did you have any issues following the tip of my finger with the lights?
No, I mean, when the light flashed right in front of my eye, yeah, but...
Just the flashlight?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have any issues with, uh, your legs, your knees, any part of your lower extremities?
No.
Anything would prevent you from doing a walking test?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, here's what, uh, we're gonna do next. This is called the walk and turn test. Alright, I'm gonna explain the instructions to you and I'll demonstrate, and then you'll demonstrate the test for me, okay? So, what we're gonna do first, is have you take a couple steps back. So, what I want you to do, I want you to pretend there's a line in front of you. I want you to put your left foot on the line, place your right foot in front of it with your right heel, touching your left toe. And you're gonna keep your hands at your side. Hold on, I didn't tell you to begin.
No, I'm sorry.
No, you're gonna listen to the instructions, and then I'll demonstrate, and then you'll...
Okay.
You'll demonstrate, okay? So, I want you to get in this position with your left foot on that imaginary line, and your right foot in front of your left foot. You're gonna be in a heel-to-toe manner. Your hands are gonna be down at your sides. Alright, you're not gonna begin until I tell you to do so. You understand so far?
Sure.
Okay. When I tell you to begin, you're gonna take nine heel-to-toe steps on that line. It's gonna look like this. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I got you.
Okay. And return nine heel-to-toe steps, alright? On this ninth step, you're gonna turn around, taking this here as a small steps, so you're back in that imaginary line. Alright, then you're gonna go, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Alright, you got out of the starting position again. I need you to get back in that starting position.
No, no, no. Well, you asked me to put my hands out, right?
I didn't say anything about keeping your hands out.
Okay.
Alright, I asked you to stay in the starting position. Alright. While walking, you're gonna watch your feet at all times, keep your arms at your side, and count your steps out loud. Once you begin, do not stop until the test is completed. Do you understand the test?
Yeah.
Can you get back in the starting position with your feet heel-toe? Hands at your side. Do you understand the test?
Nine in front, turn back around.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you may begin the test.
One, two...
Not heel-to-toe.
Four...
Steps off the line. Not heel-to-toe.
Seven, eight...
Not heel-to-toe.
Forward.
You told me you understood the test.
You told me nine heel... I don't know what to do after nine. Keep forward.
Did you understand the instructions when I read them to you?
I mean, you said, "Yes," I mean, nine... Okay, you told me to count to nine, right? Okay. Keep forward.
Are you done with the test?
Told me to count to nine and turn forward. Do you need me to keep counting till ten?
Where's his arms? Doesn't count out loud. Done. Too many steps. Done? Okay. Alright, we're gonna do one more test. This is the one-leg stand test. Do you have any balance issues? Again, any problems with your lower extremities that would prevent you from balancing on one foot?
I don't.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna get in the starting position, which is just your feet together, heels and toes even. Alright, hands at your sides again. Once again, do not begin the test until I tell you to do so. Do you understand? Okay. When I tell you to, I want you to raise one leg, either leg, approximately six inches off the ground, your foot parallel to the ground. Keep both legs straight, and keep your eyes on the elevated foot. So, I'm gonna demonstrate. Thousand and one, thousand and two, thousand and three, thousand and four, thousand and five.
Okay. Thousand and one...
Continue. I didn't tell you to begin the test, sir.
I'm sorry.
I still have to read the instructions. Okay. While holding that position, count out loud, thousand and one, thousand and two, thousand and three, and so forth, until told to stop. Do you understand the instructions?
You want me to keep counting until you tell me to stop?
Until I tell you to stop.
Gotcha.
Okay, I need you in the starting...
You want me to look down at my toe, count until you tell me to stop?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Okay, I just need you in the starting position with your hands at your side, not in your pockets.
Okay.
Do you have, uh, thirty seconds?
Yeah, okay.
Just use your watch. Just wanna know when you're ready. Just keep your hands at your side. Good. Normally, I have a watch. I don't have one on tonight.
You're all good, man, it's fine. Just let me know.
Alright.
Good?
Hands at your side?
Yep.
You may begin the test.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three...
Where's his arms for balance?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one...
Okay, now you can stop.
Okay.
Didn't you have nothing to drink tonight?
No.
Alright, just give me a figure. Just place your hands behind your back.
Why?
Because you're under arrest.
Come on, man, why?
Driving under the influence of alcohol and drugs.
Ooh. Did I just pass the test?
No.
Fuck, I'm literally like two blocks away from my house. Really, guys?
Listen, we're gonna go to the back car over there.
Of course you are, okay.
You smell like alcohol, you failed the test.
How did I fail the test? Can you explain that to me, please?
Everything will be written in the report.
I just literally, you told me to step outside, it still wasn't...
Do you have anything in your pockets? Anything that's gonna hurt me, poke me, stick me? Anything like that?
Uh, my cellphone, I don't, I mean, no, my cellphone's in the car. No, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Glasses?
Nope. Oh, yeah, my glasses, yeah.
Nope. Alright, sir, have a seat.
What's happened in the car?
Uh, it's gonna have to get towed for the next twelve hours. Stay with him. See if he's got anything in the car. Did you already call for a tow, or no?
Yeah, I did.
Six-eight, you're gonna have lucky zoom out.
I got his wallet and keys, the, uh, I got his wallet and phone. The keys are on the front seat.
Do you have a house key on there?
Rear house keys on the, the car, too?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you mind just grabbing them and taking the fob off? So, I got your phone, your wallet, and the house keys are at... Just sit with this, I'll start inside. Six-X headquarters.
Six-X.
On adult males, location headquarters, starting two-one, four-two-eight, point one.
Oh-four-eleven.
Hey, I'm, I was, uh, ID.
Okay. Headquarters, open port. Six-X arriving, two-one, four-two-eight, point nine.
Oh-four-fourteen.
NCIC alert.
Six-eight duty tow's on scene.
Oh-four-fifteen.
This apartment smells alcohol. I'm just speaking into the body, yeah. Alright, just, uh, let's step up there, 'cause we got some paperwork to do. Uh, we gotta provide samples and then get you out of here, okay? Make a second left. Stop where the white switches are.
Right here.
Right here? Yep. Again, you have no weapons, nothing, anything crazy like that.
Not at all, man.
Just, uh, face the wall? Any type of jewelry on besides a necklace on your wrist?
No, no.
Get the glasses, Rick. Just put those right here. When I tell you to, just place your hand on the wall.
Hands on the wall?
Yeah. Alright, here first. Here, take off the watch and the wristbands. Uh, hand them to me, please.
What's up?
Say, "Hand them to me, please."
Oh, both?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No. The watch and the wristband.
Sorry that you wanted to cut.
I mean, you're right there. Alright, the belt as well. You have a layer on underneath, just, uh, lose the jacket, too.
I'm sorry?
The jacket has strings. Strings can't go in.
Take it off?
Yep. Uh, lose the shoes. You can have a seat in there, last thing, is just you gotta, you gotta flip your shoe, your socks inside out, just so I know it's, there's nothing in there.
You need to take them off and...
Yeah, you can have a seat and do that. Like I said, there's some paperwork. We gotta do samples. Quicker we get in, quicker we get out, alright?
You got it?
Yeah, and the other one? Yeah, as long as there's nothing in there, you can flip them back the right way. We're just gonna make sure there's nothing inside. Alright, just give me a couple minutes, I gotta get to paperwork, we'll get started, get you out of here, okay? So, is it the seventh or the eighth?
Seventh.
Maria, in the cat, we're gonna start observation four-twenty-five. Alright, so... So, I'm gonna have to ask you a bunch of questions. Some of the things are just gonna be about you, some of the things are gonna be about tonight. Alright, um, there's a long statement on that to read later on, but we're just gonna go one sheet at a time. Alright, this first sheet is just about you, so, uh, your first name is?
Jorge.
Jorge, J-O-R-E.
Yep.
Give a middle mention?
Yeah.
Okay, so, this is the student jersey warning statement, residence violation of your rights. Before you ask any question, you must advise your constitutional rights. Number one, if your constitutional rights remain silent, do you understand that?
I do.
For all of them, if you do a yes or...
Yes.
Number two, anything you say can be used against you according to law, do you understand that?
Yes.
Number three, you have the right to the presence of an attorney during questioning, do you understand that?
Yes.
Number four, if you cannot afford an attorney, it will be appointed for you prior to any questioning, if you so desire, do you understand that?
I do, yes.
Number five, you have a continuing right to exercise your constitutional rights any time of their question, do you understand that?
Yes.
This portion. Uh, your signature is in case needed in the answer to here, and then...
Here?
Yep, signature there. Then, your printed names. So, you, Jorge Martinez, have read the above statement of your rights, and if you're read aloud to you, do you understand what your rights are? Uh, you're now allowed to answer questions without the presence of an attorney, no promises of repress, other made to you, no pressure, or orders, or any kinds of use against you.
Correct, yes.
So, one more signature, and Officer Furuley and I will sign it.
Yep.
Officer Furuley and I will sign as well. Officer Curly and I will sign as well. Two sheets, almost. It's, it's on a paperwork, unfortunately. This is... This is a drink and drive, any question and answer form?
Okay.
Um, same thing, series of questions. So your real issue is A.
Over, yeah.
Seven, six, three, uh, what time is it?
Four thirty.
Four thirty. Uh, Maria, what do you do for work? You're indicating here at four twenty-seven. Uh, tonight, what kind of alcoholic drinks did you have?
None.
So the rest of these follow-up questions are about alcoholic drinks you had, but you're indicating none.
Yep.
Uh, when did you last eat?
What time is it?
About four thirty.
Nine, ten o'clock, maybe?
Um, ten o'clock. Uh, what did you read?
Um, uh, pad thai.
Never had that one, was it?
Just free, but, yeah, I've had it in Thailand, just excellent.
Yes. Four minutes. Two minutes. Okay, this is the Attorney General standard statement. It is a very long, drawn-out statement, but after reading in its entirety. Uh, at the end of it, I'm gonna ask you for a simple, uh, answer like the warning statement, so it would be...
Yes.
But anything other than that is, I have to annotate that.
Sure.
Number one, you've been arrested for driving while intoxicated, and you guys a thirty-nine four dash fifty. Number two, law requires you to submit samples of your breath for the purpose of testing, to determine alcohol content. Number three, your record of taking of the breath samples, including the test results, will be made. Upon your request, a copy of that record will be made available to you. Number four, after you've provided samples of your breath for testing, you have the right, at your own expense, to have a person or physician of your own selection, take independent samples of your breath, blood, or your independent testing. Number five, if you refuse to provide samples of your breath, you will be issued a separate summons for the refusal. The court may find you guilty in both refusal and driving while intoxicated. Number six, if a court finds you guilty of the refusal, you will be subject to various penalties, including license revocation of up to twenty years, a fine of up to two thousand dollars, installation of ignition interlock, and referral to an intoxicated driver resource center. These penalties may be in addition to penalties imposed by the court for any other offense in which you are found guilty. Seven, you have no legal right to have an attorney, physician, or anyone else present with the purpose of taking the breath samples. You have no legal right to refuse to give or delay giving samples of your breath. Number eight, any response from you that is ambiguous or conditional in any respect to my request that you provide breath samples will be treated as a refusal to submit to breath testing. Even if you agree to take the test, but then do not follow my instructions, do not properly perform the test, or do not provide sufficient breath samples, I will charge you with refusal to submit to breath testing. Number nine, I repeat, the law requires you to submit samples of your breath for testing, will you submit samples of your breath?
No.
If the arrested person does not respond, or gives any ambiguous or conditional answer short, I will read the following. Your answer is not acceptable, the law requires that you submit samples of your breath for breath testing. If you do not answer, or answer with anything other than quote, "yes," unquote, I will charge you with refusal. Now I ask you, will you submit the breath?
No.
Uh, what's the time now?
Oh, four thirty-five.
Uh, who would be able to come pick you up? So we can't release you on your own from here, we're gonna have to have someone come and pick you up. They will decide liability for you for the next twelve hours.
That's fine, I'm on the way.
Okay, what's her name?
Ydenia, Y D S E N I A.
Same last name?
Yep.
So, we're about halfway through, uh, this portion. After this, I have to run the machine and figure your refuse.
That's fine.
All right, and then once that, we'll get your paperwork, square your body, we'll call, uh, assembly. Is she gonna be up by now, or?
I mean, I'm hoping, it's pretty late.
Okay.
So you might have to take a couple of Saturday, sure.
Okay. Um, other than that, just, uh, we just gotta be doing this observation.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
For this, um, do tattoos, uh, as just a two?
It's starting. Uh, one, two, three, four are visible, I have a couple more, but if you look at them, they're visible, it's fine. Uh, three on the right arm, two, uh, one on the left arm.
Uh, just, can you open your mouth, just let your tongue out? No crowns, no, no mouthwinds?
Nope. All good, thank you.
Right. I should be honest, we usually sell stinks of alcohol, just like the stuff, the stains in the car stuff, soon as you walk out of the car stuff. It's not, it's not anything personal, I get, we're close to home, I bet people are drivers. Unfortunately, it is, it's a very, we really can't take a chance.
Sure.
So, uh, I repeat, nine minutes, you might as well stay in here and continue your observation. And also, I'm gonna show you.
So forty-six, then?
Uh, forty-five would be ten minutes.
There you are.
Do you guys get those for dress, um...
Bees?
Yeah.
Every October, we wear them.
So you get them from the department, or you guys like fill them out yourselves?
Uniform store, they, they do it for us.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, we, we have like plain ones, but for October, we, we...
Yeah, we just got an email for the PB league that we vote for, and they're like, oh, great, some new pink, I'm like...
Yeah.
I don't know what to do.
It's a whole lot, everybody's doing pink.
I'm like, maybe like a head bannet or some socks, I don't know.
Yeah, anything, you know, pink's just a color, you can just do whatever.
No, I...
But yeah, these, uh, these started a couple of years...
Yeah.
Yeah. They started a couple of years ago, so now every October, we wear them.
No, they're helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty cool, yeah.
And then in November, we just...
Yeah.
Rip them off.
And then you start with the beards, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's right, I forgot about that. Well, we, we, we allow beards anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we allow them year-round.
Yeah. Oh, you do, you guys do?
I just can't grow them.
I mean, you can tell.
I mean, you got, I can't do that, so. I can't, uh, I can't grow anything, so. Clean shaving's the way to go for me.
I'm good with you, but I, I'm fine. So it's fine.
But yeah, we, we allow them year-round, so.
That's good.
A lot of places are, it's, it's like a generational thing, like, back in the day, it used to be like just clean cut. Some departments still do it that way, state police do it that way.
Yeah, you're...
No facial hair, state police, you know? But... There's no reason for us not to, I mean, it doesn't make you better or worse at your job, you know?
It doesn't.
So... But yeah, every October. Dirty. So... Pink everything, all month.
One more minute. The machine going?
Is it forty-five or forty-six?
Forty-five, just want to know if you're continuing to, uh, please?
Yeah. What'd you say you did again?
I'm sorry?
For work? What'd you do?
Um, I work for Tour Operator, it's called Smart Tours. Um, I mean, it's really making it like a long story short, we just do, uh, tours worldwide, so we...
Oh, like a travel, yeah, okay.
Yeah, South Africa, Europe, whatever, we have tours, you guys send up.
It's be easier for you guys to tour, right?
I'm sorry?
It must be easier for you to tour then, cause you got the inside connection, right?
It is.
That's why you said you went to Thailand?
Oh, Thailand was great, yeah, I've been there, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful country.
Not at the time.
Home talk.
Yeah.
Was not a great time to be on the street, but, um, no, we're rebounding, we're doing well, so, yeah.
It's a couple of years gone now, so...
Yeah, 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 but I mean...
We're pretty much almost back to normal, I mean, here and there, you got...
Yeah, people still get a little freaked out.
Yeah.
About everything, but, yeah.
Yeah, there's, I, I traveled, I had no problem, you know?
Yeah.
And other countries, you know, you see people just not even wear a mask or anything, it's not even like it happened.
Yeah, there's a lot of countries that depend on tourism.
Yeah.
Dollars, so they, they don't, they don't wanna be difficult.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's all their revenue.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Not Thailand, though, I mean, they're pretty much doing their own thing.
It's a big part of the revenue.
Is it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I figured like they were like up and running on their own, like, you know, didn't care about tourism, yeah.
They do, but they make big dollars, like Koh Samui, Phuket, I mean, yeah, people go and spend a lot of, a lot of dollars there, so...
There's a lot of history there, so...
There is, yeah.
I heard, I heard it's gorgeous.
It's beautiful, it's beautiful, and the food, top-notch, so...
Asia's just a long flight away, you know, so...
And if you're not doing my first class, which I didn't do, it's... You're gonna wake up with a sore back, sore feet, the whole night.
You might as well just knock out and wake up when you're there, how long's the flight?
Sixteen hours, depending if you're not connecting, it could be pretty long, yeah. Or you can connect in Hong Kong, and then...
I was about to say, I don't even know where to connect, cause it's like so far away.
Yeah.
Japan's on the bucket list.
Me too, never been there yet, but it's on the bucket list, so, yeah.
China too, I mean, you know, I don't know how travel is in that side of the world, you know? There's a lot of places that I'd like to go, but...
Yeah.
I don't know how travel, like, where, like, you know, anybody could go anywhere, pretty much, but like, I don't know. Like tourists, I feel like certain places, it's like a little harder, you know?
Yeah, China just real good.
Okay, that too, yeah.
Yeah, people haven't been there for a while, my company's not doing it until next year.
It's probably a safer bet, yeah.
Yeah.
So Japan, Japan's on the bucket list. Uh, Europe's nice.
Yeah.
Europe's very nice.
Yeah, I've done the Rhine River, which is really great.
Oh, yeah?
Amsterdam, do all your way down to France, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
So, it's a good time, yeah.
I haven't been to... Didn't go to England, didn't go to Ireland.
London was...
Missed out, who knows yet?
If I ever win the lottery, I'm buying a house in London, like that.
Like every, everywhere is like just trains, so easy to get around country to country.
Yeah, you go like England, France, Italy, all of it.
Germany one day, and then you get, it's crazy, never seen anything like it, not like here.
No.
Well, like, the countries there, excuse me, countries there are like states here, I guess, like, it's easy...